Due to the state of emergency declared by the governments of the state of New Jersey and the United States regarding COVID-19, this meeting is being held via video conference in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business. This board meeting is being streamed live via YouTube on the district website at www ebnet.org. In addition, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL. Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. The URL that everyone but me can see on your screen.
I can't see.
Into the web browser of your computer or mobile device and entering the meeting ID and password. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will automatically be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Individuals are welcome to provide comment during the Good of the Cause for the Public portion of the meeting, and the Board will hear public comment through Zoom. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. Will the secretary please call the roll?
This is Chu.
Here.
This is Mar.
Here.
This is Gwaz.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
This is Lex.
Here.
This is Reese.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
And President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting at the East Brunswick Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meeting should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening. Tonight, we would like to start up by having the Board members talk about their thoughts about how we've been navigating the educational climate that we find ourselves in. Board members who wish to speak. Mrs. Lex, Lori, I think I see your hand.
So, well, this is timely, and I know we have a commendation coming for next week being Staff Appreciation Week, so I just thought it was very timely because throughout the year, as Board members and as parents in the district, we always talk about how much our staff does for our kids. And in these unprecedented times, I just, from the bottom of my heart, am truly thankful for all of Dr. Valeski and the staff down from the top to the minor to the most major touching of the... So what everyone's been doing, everyone is working together so well, and it's just, it's very touching to me that in this world, we're able to ensure that our educational doors remain open even though our physical classrooms are closed. So I just wanted to say thank you as a Board member, as a parent, a citizen, human being, everything to everyone. Please stay safe, and everything you're doing is appreciated.
Thank you, Lori. Who else would like to speak? Please say your name. Heather?
Please remember to unmute yourself.
Heather?
Um, I just wanted to say, I know that we all see the teachers in our homes, one way or the other, through our children. As a Board member, I appreciate it. As a parent, I cannot say enough good things about what the staff, the teaching staff is doing to make my own children feel connected and still part of the education and their community. But I also wanted to take a moment to thank the staff members that aren't as easily seen. I'm talking to people that are media specialists and work behind the scenes in the schools, and it's their efforts that are making this appear so simple, this transition in such a challenging time. I also wanted to thank the administrative staff. I don't think we all get to see anybody, we don't see Dr. Valeski and the administrative teams, what they're doing, but the hours that they're putting in and the difficulties that they're absorbing to make this doable are just incredible. And I wanted to thank the people that we see, but also the people that we don't.
Thank you, Heather. I see Li Wu, and I think Mark. Li Wu?
Li Wu.
Li Wu unmuted.
There you go.
Okay. So I want to thank Victor and his team for the wonderful job they are doing for our children. I want to give special thanks to all parents. As parents of, as a father of three boys, I know how difficult when the children are home and keep them learning. And I want to give special thanks to the tech team and Nick's team to make sure everyone, all teachers are connected, are ready to provide the teaching. I want to thank everyone. Without your guys' teamwork, there's no way we can get the long-distance learning at place. Thank you.
Thank you, Li Wu. Mark?
Yes, I want to echo, I think everybody took my educational side of what I wanted to say. So I will finish with, I want to thank all the first responders, including my brothers and sisters from East Brunswick Police Department, who keep us safe while we're here at home. And on a personal note, I want to send out a message to an East Brunswick resident who's in care over 50 years. She's a nurse at a local hospital. It's my sister Debbie, and I want to thank her for saving lives during this pandemic. Thank you for your time.
That was lovely, Mark.
And Reese.
Barbara?
Oh, thank you. I'm speaking as a Board member and as a grateful parent. Our administration, staff, teachers, and the parents have truly exceeded all expectations. Their flexibility, their adaptability, their focus on continuing to deliver quality education is amazing. It really shows. Our students are learning, staying engaged, and coping with a truly extraordinary situation. I just wanted to make a special note of acknowledgement to our Child Nutrition Department and its director, Michael Capia-Buiano, and his staff for offering the pre-ordered Grab and Go meals, which are now extending on Monday to all students. You know, it's just so happy to see, especially for our families who are not qualifying for the free and reduced lunch, but maybe facing a change in their employment or financial situation. It's a tough time for a lot of our residents. This is making a big difference, you know, for a lot of people. So again, my admiration. I'm very proud and lucky to be a member of the school board and just fortunate to have my children in the East Brunswick school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Todd Simmons.
Todd?
And then Jack.
Good evening. So the one way I'm able to kind of see exactly what the impact is on our staff's engagement in this kind of unique process is that every day I see my kids progressing more and more in the curriculum because it's, you know, it's sort of different stuff every day. So they're engaged, they're doing what they're supposed to, and they are continuing to stay on task in terms of moving forward with the curriculum. So for that, I don't know how you thank folks. It really is an incredible trial-by-fire result here. They've done a great job. What I'd like to see too is, although this was a little quicker than anybody ever expected, this can perhaps serve as a model as we go forward when things become a little more normal, dealing with snow days or absences or other ways to instruct. Some kids might even learn better this way. So I'd like to see us kind of expand a little bit on what we're doing right now as we go forward. So thanks to all the staff, every one of you, for keeping our kids busy and engaged and continuing to move along with the curriculum.
Great. Bernie, was there someone else?
Yes, Jeff Winston.
Jeff Winston.
Jeff, I'm sorry, you're muted. Go right ahead.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Right. I'm not going to repeat everything that was said other than thank you to everybody involved. And I had the opportunity to watch last night's township, the Human Relations Council, and with Dr. Valeski was on that call. And what I realized that it, this is so amazing and how far it's reached beyond even the schools. It does take a village. And I listened to the police chief, Osako, listened to Dr. Valeski, who had most of the questions to field, which was great, and the answers were fantastic. The seniors, the library, there is so much in this community that has come together that the lines are blurred. I'm so proud of the residents of this town. It is just awesome how everybody has worked together, and I really think the work that the school system has done is just, the teachers, it's intense. I watch my kids, and they love it. My daughter doesn't want to go back, so that's your problem, Dr. Valeski, but it's, it's really been quite the experience. Much appreciation to everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else?
Susanna Chu.
Susanna?
Hi, good evening, and I think it's been very well put by all the other Board members, so I won't repeat. And thank you to Mr. Winston for mentioning the Human Relations Council event, which I also watched. And it really was great to see how the whole community comes together, and that's, you know, Jeff mentioned it was represented by the Police Department, the Library, Department of Aging, Recreation, as well as the schools. And everybody just working together to help the community. Everyone's serving a different niche, a different need, whether it's the elderly community or the kids. And in one case, I was watching the chats, and it was noted that one parent wanted to thank Dr. Valeski and East Brunswick Public Schools for the program that the Central School was running, it's working with the seniors and keeping up those communications. So just wonderful effort all around. As somebody who's been personally touched by COVID, I can tell you, it's, you know, I don't wish that on anyone, and those that have, you know, and I'm among the fortunate. I made it out fine, my husband made it out fine, and I just pray for, you know, those that are not that fortunate.
Thank you all so much. All I want to say is, I am very thankful for my fellow Board members. This, being a Board member is hard enough, doing it remotely, virtually. You are an amazing group of people, and I am so proud to be one of nine. So I think now we'll get on with our meeting. And Dr. Valeski, you're up. Your report, please.
Good evening. Thank you, President Becker. I would also like to begin by acknowledging the grit and determination of our students and their families. You all make me so proud to lead East Brunswick Public Schools. While we await Governor Murphy's directive on when and how we will begin our return to school, we are using what we've learned during this unprecedented closure to not just resume business as we knew it. Instead, we will be more resilient than we ever imagined, and as Mrs. Reese alluded, we'll be more flexible, more adaptable, and even more responsive. Again, thank you to the Board of Education. Your volunteerism is immensely appreciated. Your dedication and support of the students, staff, and entire administrative team during these complex times has been steadfast and unwavering. Altogether, we remain EB School strong. In January, our AP IPL team won the We the People State Competition at Rutgers University and was chosen to represent New Jersey at the April National Competition in Virginia. With the outbreak of the coronavirus, the competition took place virtually. Our AP IPL students took advantage of this virtual competition and worked diligently to prepare within their teams and with their teacher, Mr. Alan Broadman, and their coach, Mr. Mark Mondray. Students presented their research and answered a series of follow-up questions from a panel of judges during mock congressional hearings. While East Brunswick did not make the top three this year in the We the People National Competition, our students performed in a way that made us all very proud. Effective May 11th, that is a Monday, by the way, the district will be offering Grab and Go meals to all East Brunswick students regardless of eligibility. In order to participate in the Grab and Go program, students must complete the online pre-order form. Meals will be handed out at our Support Operations Facility, and that's on Edgeboro Road. A Blackboard message went out yesterday, April 28th, detailing the Grab and Go process. Additional information can be found at ebnet.org under the Child Nutrition tab. And again, that is ebnet.org, and look for, under the Child Nutrition Department tab for information. East Brunswick has been voted the Red Division Sportsmanship winner in the GMC. We were voted by our opponents based on the GMC sportsmanship criteria that includes student-athlete demeanor on the field or court, coach interaction, and fan positivity. This is a testament to our student-athletes, coaches, and fans promoting what athletics is all about. We are very proud to accept this award and will continue to strive to always display exceptional sportsmanship. Again, excellence in athletics. I would like to recognize the National Honor Society, students from high school who have sent over 300 heartfelt cards to COVID-19 patients at Hackensack Meridian Hospital. This is especially meaningful as patients cannot receive visitors, and this small gesture of caring and kindness was deeply appreciated. A representative from the hospital shared, and I quote, "All are wonderful. Some are heartbreaking and heartwarming at the same time. Some are just adorable." Some children made numerous cards. It's just great." So thank you to them.
Team patients, eh?
The East Brunswick Education is a foundation that's supporting teachers during this virtual learning time by offering $500 distance learning grants to support teachers with supplies to help them teach from home. So far, 36 distance learning grants totaling $18,000 have been awarded. And so tremendous thanks to the EBEF for their continued support. And that's just a sampling. In future reports, I'm going to be acknowledging the continuous outreach from a variety of groups, and there are a lot to be reported on, so we'll kind of pace it out in future meetings. But tonight, we'll be presenting Resolutions of Appreciation for Administrative Professionals' Day and Faculty Staff Appreciation Day. I'd like to thank all the members of the East Brunswick Public Schools for their dedication to every student. This could not be more meaningful than at this time when we have seen unbelievable, can-do attitudes of so many individuals delivering and supporting our EB excellence in both virtual and responsible social distancing environments. Congratulations to all our administrative professionals, faculty, and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. Next up is our budget update and discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Becker. If you could please validate for me, you can, can you see the screen at this point?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. All righty. So this is our update on the revisions to the tentative budget. This is similar to the discussion that we had at the prior board meeting. We'll start with a quick review on state aid. The state aid that has changed over the number of years from fiscal 2009 all the way down through the budget for next year, fiscal 2021. You'll see that state aid had decreased and remained lower for a number of years, and then has been slowly moving back into a range that is where we had left more than 11 years ago. The note I do want to make with regard to state aid is, given the current economic situation, we are not sure whether this state aid level will remain as is. In fact, we believe it will be coming down, and I'll speak to that a little bit more in a bit. So currently, the budget is based on estimated revenue of, that reflects the state aid increase of $2.4 million, and the tax cap of $2.5, almost $2.6 million, which brings that to the 2% maximum cap. Originally, the tentative budget incorporated the use of banked cap, but as we had previously discussed, the banked cap aspect has been removed from the budget, and there are other adjustments as well that have already been consented to and additional adjustments that will be forthcoming. In terms of charter school payments, those are mandated by law, and this provides a quick overview regarding the change in charter school payments since 2010. As you can see, it is a substantial investment or reduction from our, from our available budget. These funds are directly transferred to the charter school to sustain the charter school. Moving along in terms of appropriations impacts, and these were highlights with regard to large, large cost centers within the budget that impact the bottom line. First, we have commitments for base salary pursuant to the collective bargaining and contractual obligations. That is $2.96 million. In the tentative budget was an allowance for, to address K-5 enrollment and class size, which would have provided for temporary classroom units and some teaching positions. Those have been removed and will not be included within the tentative budget. Other impacts are in health benefits. Health benefits increase is currently budgeted at $1.6 million. That is the increase. Now, that is less than what was projected in terms of our claims experience. In recent communications with our insurance broker and reviewing the most recent claims experience results, the outlook has not improved, and so in the final budget, we will need to ensure that we provide additional funds for health benefits. Our out-of-district tuition has increased as well for next year, $371,000. Most of that increase was essentially accounted for since the January 15th analysis occurred with our out-of-district tuition. We also have an allowance for therapeutic counseling, which is a new service to support the social, emotional well-being of our students. That obligation or that allowance at this time is $350,000. And in order to have achieved a balanced budget in the tentative budget, there are reductions in our pre-K instructional assistance as well as in our ICS resource instructional Given some of the adjustments that we've already discussed with regard to the removal of the banked cap as well as the removal of the temporary classroom units and the teachers associated with those, our estimated revenue and appropriations have been adjusted. We currently are not in balance. Of course, that will be in balance by the time a final budget is adopted. This screen provides an overview of where we are at this time. With the base cap at the 2% level, our general fund tax increase is fully on that amount. However, because our debt service is decreasing, the tentative composite tax increase is 1.86%. Some additional impacts that we need to be aware of, and we discussed this at the last meeting, the impact that the current school closures have had on our enterprises. This screen is showing us what our actual net income was last year and what is, it is now projected to be by the time this fiscal year ends. And there are substantial variances in each of these areas. So in discussions that we've had at finance committee level, the amount that has been allocated to be transferred from enterprise funds, and as a footnote, the enterprise funds do provide support to balance the general fund budget. It is, it is a conservative approach that we'll be taking in excluding any transfer of revenue from the enterprise funds. Now, that amounts to approximately $1.5 million, and so we'll need to be making up those sources either through other offsets or other reductions in the budget. Any details regarding changes to the budget will be discussed at the public hearing. Some additional impacts I also want to note, and these are the same as those I have reviewed at the last meeting, but they certainly bear review. State of New Jersey revenue and state aid to schools. The legislation that was signed into law on April 14th does change the state's fiscal year. The state's fiscal year would normally end June 30th. It will now end September 30th, so it extends the fiscal year for three months. During this period of time, it provides the state an opportunity to assess its financial house. In the meantime, the state treasurer is preparing a report, pardon me. In the meantime, the state treasurer is preparing a report on the current fiscal year 2020 and the proposed fiscal year 2021 state budget. That report is due to the legislature on May 22nd, and will provide the financial outlook for the state's revenues. Following that, the governor will be providing a revised budget message on the next year's budget. That budget message will be provided by August 25th. It will then have an impact on what the state aid to schools is. We do believe that there will be a substantive increase, I'm sorry, substantive decrease in the state aid to schools for next year. We don't have any affirmation at this time, but based on news reports and our own experience with situations that have been less severe than this, we can anticipate that there will be a reduction in state aid. What are the key dates coming up? Well, the public hearing is next week on May 7th, and at that time, a review will be made with regard to any of the changes to the budget, and then the final budget adoption will occur on May 14th. The budget information has been available on the district website at ebnet.org. On the left side of the website is a list of quick links. Just click on the user-friendly budget link, and that will take you to another page where you will then see the FY 2021 tentative budget. Again, that is the tentative budget. It does not reflect the revisions that I've discussed or that will still be made. Once those are made, the reports that are presented on the district website will be updated to reflect the final budget. And that concludes the budget review. Are there any questions?
Anybody? Okay. Thank you very much. This brings us to the Good of the Cause of the public. As a reminder, members of the public who wish to provide comment at this meeting may do so through Zoom, a remote video conferencing system. Free direct access is available by entering the URL on the Free direct access is available by entering the URL on the screen into the web browser of your computer or mobile device and entering the meeting ID and password. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will be automatically muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. In order to be recognized, select the chat feature in Zoom, then enter and send your name to the meeting host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called. Individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of common, public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. In order to be permit the fair and orderly expression of such comment, the board shall provide a period of public comment at every meeting of the board, but participants will be limited to three minutes duration. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? Bernie, do we have anyone?
No one, no indication.
Okay, seeing none, um, I will close the public portion. Next up, we have a resolution of appreciation. Can I please have a motion for the following? Whereas administrative professionals are partners in the education of our students and whereas administrative professionals play a major role in creating an environment that is conducive to learning in our schools and whereas administrative professionals provide valuable services to our students, faculty, staff, parents, and other members of the community and whereas administrative professionals are essential to the efficient, effective operation of the schools and whereas administrative professionals facilitate important communication between the schools, parents, and other members of the community and whereas administrative professionals help to maintain the excellent reputation of the district. Now be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education recognized Wednesday, April 22nd, 2020 as Administrative Professional Day in the District and expresses appreciation to our administrative professionals for their dedication and commitment to our students and our schools. Can I please have a motion?
So moved. Mrs. Reese?
Moved by Mrs. Reese, second by Mr. Winston. Is there any discussion? Is anybody raising their hand?
No.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution of appreciation for Faculty Staff Appreciation Week. Whereas all members of the faculty and staff contribute to the excellence of the school district and whereas all members of the faculty and staff are partners in the education of our students and whereas all members of the faculty and staff play an essential role in creating a welcoming and secure learning atmosphere in which all students are able to achieve to the fullest extent and whereas the dedication and commitment of all members of the faculty and staff are directly related to the outstanding accomplishment of our students and whereas there is no greater legacy than the sound education our students receive. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education proclaims May 4th through May 8th, 2020 as Faculty Staff Appreciation Week and commends all members of the faculty and support staff for the time and effort they devote to our students. So moved by Mrs. Lacks.
Mr. Simmons and Mr. Hong.
Like he said. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And is there any discussion? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the Board of Education agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through three?
So moved. Mr. Hong? And Mr. Winston.
Okay, is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks? Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the Community Programs Agenda. I'd like to combine items one through three. Can I please have a motion for that? So moved. Moved by LeWu, second by Mark?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Actually, Bernie, I abstain on item number three.
Noted.
Motion carry. Can I please have a motion to combine items one and two on the Curriculum and Instruction Agenda?
So moved Jeff.
Moved by Jeff?
Second, LeWu.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to the Facilities Agenda, can I have a motion to combine items one through three?
Mark, so moved.
Mark, so moved. Lori, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to the Financials, I'm sorry?
Yes, before you, um, ask for a motion on the Financial section, I did want to note one correction.
Okay.
This is, um, on page 16. The, um, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth paragraph from the top. Uh, the date should be July 1, 2020.
Okay, does everybody have that?
No. Let me give you the page. That is, uh, on page 16.
What item number is it?
Regarding item, item number five. In the Financial Services Section.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, can I please have a, a motion for items one through nine?
So moved Jeff.
Moved by Jeff?
Susanna, second.
Second by Susanna. Is there any discussion?
No.
Was that?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Human Resources Agenda, can I please have a, a motion for item one?
So moved Mark.
Moved by Mark?
Second, LeWu.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yeah.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the Staff Development, can I please have a motion for item one?
Susanna, so moved.
Moved by Susanna, second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained? Motion carries. Moving on to our Student Services Agenda, can I please have a motion for items one through three?
So moved, LeWu.
Moved by LeWu?
Second, Barbara.
Second, Barbara. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lacks?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
And President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. This brings us to Committee Reports, Information Items, and the Good of the Cause of the Board, and I am very happy to welcome our student rep Rachel with us tonight. Rachel, we look forward to hearing from you. What's going on? Anything different?
Um, yeah, so it's kind of crazy because there's no way any could have expected this, but we did switch to the one-to-one at the high school in September and obviously like the transition had a couple of issues, but I'm so thankful we did that because it's helped us so much to have a smooth transition into learning in quarantine. Um, and there were like no problems at all. We just knew exactly what to do. It was going on Canvas like we would every day at school. Um, so that was really great. Um, and the teachers have been so supportive. I know like they will come on at different times during the day. They say if you are dealing with a family situation or if you just can't really get up that early to come to my class because of whatever you're dealing with, come on at a later time. And then I know there are AP teachers and we're kind of freaking out a little with AP exams coming up and they're replying to our Canvas messages at like 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, just like always being there to support us, which we all really appreciate. Um, and then it's also Decision Day, uh, tomorrow and a lot of colleges have pushed that out to like May 15th just because kids have a couple more things to think about right now. Um, but to kind of give us a virtual Decision Day, Student Council has been putting together some things where we submit pictures and our apparel and they'll do like a slideshow just to make us feel together. And we've been doing like spirit weeks and things like that. Um, so that's really nice. And then also as president of NHS, I just want to reiterate that I'm like so proud of everyone in NHS for making the cards for Hackensack Meridian. And we're going to keep doing that, encouraging our friends in other schools to put that together because, um, the lady who like is the liaison for Hackensack said they really appreciate it and they will take many more cards because it's obviously hard for patients right now and that's just something that lifts them up. Um, yeah, so that's, that's everything.
Nice.
Thank you. Thank you for hanging in there. You guys are doing great. Are there any other Committee Reports, Information Items for the Good of the Cause on the Board? LeWu?
So last night, I attended the EBEF meeting. So, uh, as a board member and as a parent, as a East Brunswick resident, I really want to give huge thanks to Jack and his EBEF team. During this difficult time, 36 of our teachers sub, applied for the grant and they approved everyone. And they shopped and sent everything the teachers asked to the teacher's place. And from the magnetic blackboard to the ladybug kite. So in that box, it contains ladybug laughing and the students can watch it for development from lava to ladybugs. So it's amazing. I want to thank them a lot. For the pie dinner, it was postponed to, uh, October. So, uh, it's various, uh, it's surprising, no advertise, uh, no advertisement was withdrawn. People all know that it's charity, for charity purpose. So all the business owners are willing to stay with the, uh, the pie, uh, pie dinner. So it's, they are still selling the rifle ticket, so they are trying to make more money. So, you know, uh, Jack and his EBEF really make East Brunswick very special.
Thank you, LeWu. Is there anyone else? Anyone who I can't see their hand raised, Bernie?
Uh, Susanna?
Susanna?
Um, so as the Board of Ed rep on the Human Relations Council, just wanted to let everyone know the Human Relation Council continues their monthly meetings, uh, now using WebEx and, and subcommittee meetings, uh, using, you know, using phone and WebEx. So, uh, continuing this, continuing work in this new remote world. And, you know, I was in the meeting a couple of months ago when we, you know, had all this list of events that were planned for the year that are now kind of on hold, you know, not quite sure when and if and how they can go forward. And the idea was brought forward to put, uh, together this series called Unity in the Community. So the one that Dr. Valeski participated in, um, is actually the second in the series. And the first one, uh, featured, um, you know, members of the community and, and organizations that had various efforts that, you know, were helping. So it's really kind of telling all the positive stories because what we're reading every day is just, and myself included, just reading all the bad news and getting depressed. Um, and it's quite uplifting to hear about how the community is really stepping together and doing some really good things to help each other. So, um, for, you know, these kind of events and future events, um, follow the organization on Facebook, East Brunswick Human Relations Council, EBHRC on Facebook and events are posted there. Uh, the Unity in the Community talking conversation was a Facebook Live event, but it can be watched afterwards. It is videotaped. And you get to see our very own Dr. Valeski and, and all the compliments that came in for the great work that, um, Dr. Valeski and the whole team have been doing in this difficult time. End of report.
Thank you, Susanna. Is there anyone else? Heather? Oh, no? Okay, sorry. I just wanted to know, does anyone else in these Zoom meetings feel like they're on Hollywood Squares? Where, or kind of a crazy beginning to the Brady Bunch TV show?
Brady Bunch advance.
I think we should all do the, the Brady Bunch theme song at the next board meeting.
You can lead it off.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, Bernie.
Rachel, Brady Bunch.
I was saying Jeff, actually.
Rachel, Rachel does not know.
Is there anybody else who has anything before we go into close?
Well, you know, Victor, we can't all be spring chickens.
No, we can't.
No, we can't.
I'm sorry, I missed something, something about a chicken?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, we do have a need for a closed session. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. Whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows. Those items listed in tonight's agenda. Whereas the length of the closed session is estimated to be 45 minutes, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene and action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Jeff?
Second, LeWu.
Second by LeWu. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. I want to remind board members, please log out of this meeting. We'll take a brief five-minute recess and we'll see you all in the closed session Zoom meeting. Thank you for joining us. Good night.